Commissioner Asimling is in person. She's in her proper seat.
Indeed, she is.
You're muted.
I've forgotten how to do that already.
You're not muted, Commissioner Lawrence.
I'm working at it.
You're not muted.
I'm not.
You're not muted.
I'm not.
Commissioner Asimling is muted.
Okay.
You did something, though. No, we don't see you.
Me?
Yeah.
I don't see me either.
You clicked on the little stop video on the bottom left, probably.
Instead of your microphone, Catherine, you clicked your video.
I agree.
Well, okay, where the heck is my microphone? There's my microphone. And I don't think that I'm muted at the moment.
You're not. Now you are.
There, we could see a rest, but you are on mute as well.
Commissioner Lawrence, you're muted. Or not muted, but your video is not on.
How do I get my video to be on? Oh, there's a start video thing.
Yep.
I didn't see.
There you are.
Yay.
Shannon, you've got two sites open.
Yeah, my laptop doesn't have the greatest sound quality on Zoom, so I'm calling in on my phone and on my laptop at the same time. So I've actually got my phone that's doing the talking for me.
Okay.
Right, it's seven o'clock by my computer.
Yep, and I am recording, and YouTube unfortunately doesn't look like it's going to work tonight.
So we can start?
We are ready.
All right, says the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States.
America.
To the republic which stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, liberty, justice. Right. Do we have an approval of the minutes?
Almost.
Last minute, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye, I guess.
Aye.
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 Maybe you better put a hand up.
Shannon, you don't have to vote. You weren't here.
I shouldn't have voted. I wasn't here either.
But that's okay.
And I'm sorry, Shannon, welcome to the planning commission.
Hi, Shannon. Thank you.
Glad to have you. I didn't mean to skip that.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
It'll be lots of fun.
It sounds thrilling. I'm very excited.
Some of the time. Okay. Is there any topics on the floor that are not on the agenda? Do we have much public there?
We do have one person, Claire Cat. She was here last time just watching. I'm assuming that's the same. Claire, if you want to talk about anything not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so.
No, thanks. Just watching.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I guess we can go into the first hearing. It is now 7:02 PM. The public hearing is now open. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is a request for annexation. Subject property is identified in the county assessor's map as lot 2200 on map 4N1W8AC. The applicant is Mark and Elizabeth Sell. Sell, the owner is same. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, we'll take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an exporte contact conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Seeing none. Does anyone from the audience object to the ability of a commissioner to make a fair decision? All right, so generally the order of procedure, proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application. Neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, final questions, close of the record, deliberations and decision. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS 197.7635. The following is a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. St. Elles Municipal Code 17.28.030, the approval standards for annexation. St. Elles Municipal Code 17.08.0401A, the approval standards for the zone and comprehensive map amendments. St. Elles Municipal Code 17.08.060, St. Elles Municipal Code 17.112.0302. Decision for classifying annexed property as an established or developing an area shall be based as they are defined per St. Elles Municipal Code 17.12112, excuse me, 1020. All testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criterias described or other criteria in the plan such as the comprehensive plan or land use regulation such as that found in the development code, which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue, including constitutional or other issues related relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or in writing, or failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the approving authority and an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue and precludes an action for damages in civil court, circuit court. All right, we have a staff report from Jacob.
Not Jacob.
From a staff member.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Woo. That's a lot more words than I think the staff report even needs. Yeah, so we have an annexation for the benefit of, I think, the whole commission, but especially Shawna. I'm going to go over some basic things I wouldn't normally go over for annexations, but since we have two of them tonight, going over them this first time, we'll just make the second one that much easier. So first, where are we? So you all can see Google Earth, I hope, pulled up. So this is Highway 30 here. This is the former Mark's Custom Exteriors building, and then Burrito House is right here. So there's a little side street called Furway Lane, and the property is right about here. It's about a half acre, and you can see it's developed with an existing home, and it's got a carport next to it. And then this is kind of the undeveloped Kavanaugh Avenue that we might reference later. That's where we are. It's not often that we get annexation requests from an applicant who doesn't want to just connect to our utilities or use our rules. This applicant actually just wants to be in the city. I've never, I've never actually seen an annexation request where, you know, someone just wants to be in the city. So that's this case. It's about a half acre, and I'm going to show a photo of what the property looks like. So this is Kavanaugh, standing on the corner of Kavanaugh and Furway. You can see the existing home here. Furway Lane doesn't have sidewalks, but it does have a curb that you can see, and Kavanaugh also weirdly has a curb, but turns to gravel if you go a little bit further down, and you can see the existing home. So this property is connected to McNulty Water. So it's not connected to city water, but there is also sewer available along Furway Lane and Kavanaugh as well. So with annexations, we always talk about zoning. So I'll show you the map that was included in your staff report and just talk about this for a brief minute. So here's the property we're looking at. You can see that it's abutting some existing city property. All the pink is property zoned highway commercial in city limits. And so it's got city limits on two sides of it. Later, you're going to see an annexation for some property nearby here. Jacob's been working on it. I think it's this one right here. Anyway, so that'll come up next. This property is currently in the county and zoned commercial general. C3 is the zoning classification. And basically, there's a line of C3 commercial in the county, and it kind of follows this line here. So everything to the right of my cursor is zoned commercial for the most part. There's a little finger here that's zoned residential in the county. But there's a pretty good swath along the highway that stays commercial.
So is our lot that we are looking at, it looks like it's not so far designated as commercial. Is it going to be residential?
So yeah, that's what we discuss when we talk about annexations, actually. So we look at two different things when we annex a property. We look at what our comprehensive plan says it should be, and then we also look at the surrounding zoning in the city to make a decision. And so we'll get to the classifications a little bit later. On this, on this particular zone change, it's pretty easy because we have one option. Sometimes when we get annexations, we, our comprehensive plan allows us to have multiple zoning options, and then we have to kind of determine the best use or the best zone for that particular location. In this case, it's kind of a slam dunk. There's not a lot of options. We did get, when we sent this out to utilities, we did get notice back from the county that they have no objections to this annexation. It wouldn't be very common that the county would object, but it just, I just thought it was interesting to note. So as Catherine alluded to, our comprehensive plan zones this property unincorporated highway commercial. So upon annexation, incorporated highway commercial is really the only option given to us. Historically, annexations used to go to the votes, the voters for approval. Our charter originally stated that annexations could only be approved by a majority vote among the electorate. But back in 2016, the state passed a Senate bill that gave four conditions for when an annexation would not go to the voters. It would just automatically get approved. And those four conditions were, you know, the properties within the urban growth boundary this property is. The property will be subject to the city's comprehensive plan, basically looking at our comprehensive plan zoning, and this property will. And that the property is contiguous already to city limits, which we know it is on two sides. The last one is that the property conforms to all other city requirements. So basically, this property does not need to go to our voters for approval because it meets all four of those, all four of those conditions. So whenever we annex a property, we look at transportation impacts. In this case, the property was zoned county commercial, so the greatest intensity of use could already occur at that, and moving it to commercial in the city is not going to change intensity of use. So there really is no need to analyze transportation impacts upon annexation. So the site's connected to water. It's not currently connected to sewer, but if they wanted to, there's plenty of capacity for them to connect. So we always look at whether or not our utilities can sustain annexing a property in, and in this case, they can. So this is an interesting one. The land use of the property is residential, and we know that residential use is not permitted in highway commercial. And so Jacob made sure to contact them to make, you know, if the house is ever destroyed, they can't rebuild as residential. It's not an allowed use in highway commercial, and they were aware of that and still wanted to proceed with annexation. And so I think that's an interesting case, probably a case that we wouldn't normally see. You know, I think his words were that the value is in the land, not the home on the property. And so I think that's why he had no problem with annexing. So I think that's all I have in my staff report. We look at statewide planning goals for annexations, but most of them are about public involvement, transportation and utilities capacity. And we kind of cover those in our own local rules, so there's a lot of redundancies in the staff report. But staff's recommendation is to annex it and zone it highway commercial incorporated. And that the comprehensive plan designation also be highway commercial incorporated. So it's kind of a, you know, there's not a lot of decisions to make here. It's kind of procedural, but that's all I have. Any questions?
I have some. So the new owner, are they planning to live in the property? Or are they planning to change the property into some other use?
There's no plan submitted for redevelopment of the property.
There's not a new owner.
Yeah, it's the same owner.
It's a long time older. It's an older couple. And basically, the gentleman who I talked to, he saw commercial development happening in the vicinity, and he thought that it made sense that it come into the city as commercial, as Jenny mentioned, because there's more value in the land as commercial than the residence. I think I remember talking to him about, you know, when they may move away, and I kind of remember him talking about that sometime in the somewhat near future.
Can I speak to this? Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi.
This is Catherine. Hi. We, this is our forever home. This is our retirement home. And we both hope to retire in December. And after all this moving, as I told my husband, I'm not moving again unless it's feet first. So this is a long-term plan for us.
Catherine, I think you might be talking about the wrong hearing.
We're not to her hearing yet.
Sounded like mine.
We have two annexation public hearings tonight, and this one is for Mark and Elizabeth Sell.
So sorry, I'm muting now.
Okay, we'll talk in five minutes.
I just have a question. I just need a little education. This seems crazy, this city limits line that goes back and forth around all these properties. Why do we annex it this way instead of like by block or something?
So one of the criteria is that we're not, well, I can let Jacob speak to this too, but it requires certain authorization from property owners to just pull them in. And the city, in Jacob's history, has never forced annexations. We've always let the applicant decide, hey, I want to elect to annex. And so that's kind of why we've got these islands.
Okay.
Jennifer, in the past, we've talked about contacting the owners adjacent and asking if they wanted to go along. Did we do that in this case or not, mother?
No, we didn't. I would just say, we're busy.
Yeah, you don't need any more work. I realize that. I thought to help round things out, a one fell swoop would be taking all in, and then it would take care of that, but yeah.
That would be problematic because I sold the adjacent property, the southern property that touches both Highway 30 and that one last year, and they do have a mortgage. Now, it's a problem getting a mortgage for residents if it's zoned highway commercial. So I can see that that would be problematic for some people.
So another thing, Commissioner Pugley, the reason this is so Nazi-looking, it, to annex a property, it has to be adjacent to a city property. It looks like they're not. But across the highway, there is city property. So we can annex properties across the highway in a more jerky-looking fashion because they are adjacent to city limits just across the freeway.
Yeah, let me, let me talk about that a little bit. So Dan is right. In order for us to annex property, it must be adjacent to city limits or separated only by a right-of-way or body of water. We usually don't have to deal with the body of water, but we deal with the right-of-way a lot. Now, in annexations, the most typical form that we see is someone petitioning to annex. And there's a couple of reasons why someone will do that. The most common is someone wants a connection to a city utility, be it water or sewer. And probably 90% of the times, or maybe more, it's because someone wants to develop and they need to connect to a utility. And in our ordinance, it says, well, okay, if you want to connect to our utility, we need a consent to annex. The consent to annex goes on to the deed, and if it's contiguous to city limits, we can proceed with this process here. In this case, it's a very boring one. There's not a lot of zoning discussions. But we've had had ones that were pretty exciting. Most of you will probably remember the Zoll annexation from a year or two ago, where all the neighbors were out, and we had a lot of choices to make. Sometimes people want to annex to use the city's rules. Let's say the county has a rule that says, you know, you have to do A and B, but the city's rule says, well, D and C is fine, and the person may want to use the city's rules. And so that would be a reason for annexation. And then every once in a while, you have one like this where someone simply wants to be in the city. Coincidentally, I've seen one other annexation where someone just simply wanted it to be in the city. And that was actually just a little south of here. It was the Bonnie Gamet annexation. For anyone who have been around a long time, maybe you remember that. It wasn't very exciting. But it's one I remember because it was one of those cases where, well, I just want to be in the city. And it's like, no, weird, shocking. Another incentive may be if you are contiguous and you're a water user. From before, we had the rules in place that said you had annex to connect, but if you're outside city limits, that water bill is twice as much. So that's incentive. I haven't seen that one yet. There are a couple of properties that could annex from a long time ago. And now, so then the question is forcing people to annex. There are some rules that allow forcing it, and I believe one of those has to do with being surrounded at least three sides by city limits. As Jenny mentioned, the city has not forced an annexation for decades. So, and so I don't have experience forcing people to annex here, nor in my prior jurisdictions.
I remember one, blame it on the goat, where they wanted to hook up to city water.
Oh, yeah, yep, on Furlock. That was funny because Mayor Peterson at the time was on the fire department when that goat burned. It knocked over something, a lantern or something that burned something down.
Pulled down the pump house and then burned up, yeah.
So sometimes you get some interesting stories with these annexations.
Are there any other questions, or should we open it up for public? All right, would anyone like to speak in favor? Not seeing anybody.
Anybody in neutral testimony? Anyone in opposition? And the applicant's not here, so we don't have an applicant providing anything. Anyway, so, so the commission, have any final questions before we close the hearing? Hearing none. The scripture is odd. See. Close of the public record, but I don't see how to describe that. Hearing up for the questions from the commission, no further responses from staff, the public record is closed. This matter is returned to the table for deliberations and oral discussions. So now it's time for us deliberate, to deliberate and vote if there's anything to deliberate about. He was pretty cut and dried to me.
I'll make a motion that we accept the annexation, and when it's annexed, property will have a comprehensive plan designation highway commercial and zoned highway commercial.
Have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Asimling, you're muted still. No one can hear you. You haven't been unmuted yet. I think we have a second from somebody.
I did.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, looks like it's passed.
Shannon for a second.
Okay.
I'm assuming.
What's up?
Well, for the purpose of the minutes, raising hands is not something.
It's a smooch.
How do we do it, then?
Counsel does a roll call.
Okay.
Okay, all right. This is my first time Zoom, Zoom chairing here. Okay, do we, do we need to do that still, so you know what the vote is, or?
Well, I'm pretty sure this, this one's unanimous. It's not a very dicey.
Yeah, everyone had.
All right, well, I'll do a roll call next time. Do we have a motion to approve the commission, your chair, your time, the final decision?
This goes to counsel.
I don't, yeah, we don't need it.
Yep.
Okay, that was on the text here.
And the view behind your head is driving me crazy. It looks like you're sitting in the corner of my living room.
Well, while you're done.
I think it's a very pretty view, personally.
Well, yeah.
It is, but it, but it looks like he's in the corner of the living room looking at her.
One of his hair is blowing.
Oh, yeah, I gotta whip it back. All right. Okay, it is now 7:25 PM. The public hearing is now open. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is a request for annexation. The subject property is identified in the county assessor's map as lot 2500 on map 4N1W8BB. The applicant is Catherine and Charles Frank. We were from them earlier. The owner is same because quasi judicial procedures, proceedings require the observance of procedural formalities. We'll take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an exporte contact, conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Hearing none. Does anyone from the audience object to the ability of a commissioner to make a fair decision? You see anybody, Jacob or Jenny, or? All right. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, final questions, close of the record, deliberations and decision. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS 197.7635. The following is a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. City of St. Elles Municipal Code 17.28.030, the approval standards for annexation. St. Elles Municipal Code 17.08.0401A, the approval standards for the zone and comprehensive map amendments. St. Elles Municipal Code 17.08.060, St. Elles Municipal Code 17.112.032. Decision for classifying annexed property as an established or developing area shall be based as they are defined per City of St. Elles Municipal Code 17.112.020. All testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criterias described or other criteria in the plan such as a comprehensive plan or land use regulations such as that found in the development code, which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue, including constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or in writing, or failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the approving authority and an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue, and precludes an action for damages in circuit court. All right. Who's the staff report?
It's me again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So here's where we were. We're going to go up the highway, take Furlock Park left, follow it down, turn up here, and here we are. So this is a similar in size, .5 acre-ish property that is currently vacant. So this is. So this is Furlough Park Street. And then this is First Street right here. And I've got a photo of the site. So here's First Street stop sign, and then here's Furlough Park. So this is the vacant property in question tonight. So this property owner has applied for an annexation because they want to hook into city water. They have applied for and received a permit with the county for a septic system. This property is not currently served by city sewer. You can see here, Furlough Park doesn't have sidewalks. And actually, our right of way is insufficient in size to meet the collector's street standard. But annexations are not the appropriate place to get that additional right of way. And so if this property were to ever be divided in the future, we could, we could get that right of way. And we'll, we'll get frontage improvements if it develops in the city as well. First Street's a local street, also no frontage improvements here. You can see there's some few sparse trees around the perimeter of the property, but mostly flat. So let's look at zoning. So here's the property in question. Again, it's a budding city, city limits property. It's within our U G B. It meets our comprehensive plan. And so this is not going to go to the voters for final approval. So this is zoned county multifamily residential. And the cutoff line for that multifamily residential is First Street. So all the properties north of Fur are zoned county multifamily residential. Everything to the south is zoned single family residential in the county or R ten per their standards. I think it was a couple of years, but we, we annexed this one recently and zoned it apartment residential. So we're going through a similar process with this one as well. Similar to the last annexation, our comprehensive plan designation allows for one type of zoning. And so there's not a lot of deliberations that can happen on this property. The county commented and said they had no objections. The only applicable zoning upon annexation is apartment residential, so similar to the others. Because it's a similar zoning in the county as in the city, we don't have to look at transportation impacts. So we don't need to look at a transportation impact analysis upon annexation. We know that this area not being served by sewer is probably going to limit density more than the zoning will. But if sewer is ever extended down Furlough Park Boulevard, you know, some of these properties are big enough to maybe be divided in the future and be built at a higher density. But likely, septic systems are going to limit the, the density of those properties for now. Our water system capacity can sustain another house. We've got plenty, plenty of water in the city of St. Helens. So like I mentioned, we can't get frontage improvements out of them upon annexation. That will come with future development or land divisions. And I think that's all I've got. So upon annexation, staff's recommendation, zone it apartment residential and zone it general residential incorporated is, is the comprehensive plan designation that goes along with multifamily. So are there questions about this?
I have a question. When we were annexing the other property, this came up about the insufficient sewer. What, what would it take to have sufficient sewer for this locality? It would have to go all the way to Gable Road or to the south to Hazel Street? Or is it a, is it a big job?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty far away. So the, the sewer system is at a two-foot depth at this point, right about where my cursor is. So it can't be gravity served any further. And I also think there's some capacity issues with the existing sewer along Gable. So it's like a pretty substantial improvement need.
It's uphill towards Gable after you get farther south you go.
Yeah, so this line that's built to here can't be extended any further for, for multiple reasons. The depth, but also capacity of that line.
All right, thanks.
Okay. I was wondering, I was wondering about that too because of the fact that some of the properties on Alder Street have gone to city sewer in the past because they had septic that failed. And that's why I was wondering whether they would go-
Yeah, and I know this, the city engineering departments in the process of going through a sewer master planning effort. And so they're forecasting when sewer improvements will go in in the future. And I know this particular area is on their minds.
And they say it can't be gravity fed, could it be pumped off to the site to that? Or it's still an issue?
The reason that a pump system was allowed for this property is because it's already developed. And so there was a line distinction made in the sand that said, this is a vacant property. We're not going to allow a new pump system to, to feed into this line. But because there was a house here already that the septic system failed, council allowed an exception for a pump system.
Does that line have to be rebuilt all the way back to Gable to do the job?
Yeah, it did. It did have to go all the way back and the owner of the property had to pay.
And I think there are other system upgrades too, like a larger pump system to support the capacity that's already on the line.
So the, the properties in this area that have been developed and have had bailing septic systems, what they've installed is what's called a step system. I'm not sure what the acronym means, but it's actually private infrastructure in the public right of way. And our, our city engineering staff do not like those because it creates a utility mess within a public right of way. And so that's why it's not really an option to develop vacant property as in this case. You know, maybe they would have not wanted to deal with a big old septic system because it took up a lot of area on the property. But when we have pre-existing dwellings, the septic fails, there's no way to improve it. It becomes an inhabitable structure unless it has a connection to sewer. And that's been the case where the council has allowed that exception.
They've already got their foundation built on that property.
Yeah, in, in this case, the septic is approved and functional. So it's not, in, in this case, this particular one, you know, there's a fully functional new subsurface system. But the one across from Furlough Park, which was the last time this group saw this, that was one of those cases where, you know, the house has been there for a long time. The system failed. If they didn't have a connection to sewer, that house would have been inhabitable.
Any other questions for staff?
Do you have any, when it's going to be developed, a multi-family or is it?
No, I think it can only support a single family dwelling.
Oh, I see.
With a septic system, the drain field is pretty substantial.
Yeah, yeah, all that makes sense, okay. All right.
If there's no more questions of staff, does the applicant want to make a presentation? Sounds like the applicant's here.
I can talk now. I just wanted to say Chuck and I both asked the city, could we please connect to the city sewer? Because we just know in the long term, that would be the best. And we said we'd pay and we were flat denied. So really, we didn't want the septic system. We've got an A T and T system and it's expensive. But that, that was really, I don't know if it was the city or the county's call, but we tried. So. And please rest assured our neighbors that it is just a single family dwelling. They were really afraid that we were putting in an apartment.
Any other questions of Catherine? All right, does anyone have testimony in support of this application? Say the applicant. Anyone, neutral testimony? Or testimony in opposition? I don't think we have any other people out there, right? Okay, all right. Hearing no further questions from the commission and no further responses from staff. The public record is closed and this matter is returned to the table for deliberations and oral discussion. Anything you want to talk about or you just want to make a motion?
Let's make a motion. The subject property, do you have a comprehensive plan designation? General residential and zone apartment residential.
I'll second it.
All right, all in, I'm in favor. How do I do this? So I guess Commissioner Semley, are you in favor or opposing?
In favor of.
Commissioner Pugsley, in favor or opposing?
In favor.
Commissioner Webster, in favor or opposing?
Favor.
Commissioner Hubbard, in favor or opposing?
In favor.
Commissioner Lawrence, in favor or opposing?
In favor.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, in favor or opposing?
In favor.
All right, I think that's everybody, right? All right, and it just goes to counsel and city.
Yeah, so, well, is it Kathleen? I remember talking to you and your husband, the applicant.
Catherine.
Catherine, so just so you know, so this body provides a recommendation to the city council. And then the next entity that reviews it is the council. They ultimately approve it. Once they approve it, then we draft an ordinance that goes through a couple of meetings. And, and then once the ordinance is approved, we send all that stuff out, including to the Secretary of State. The reason I'm telling you this stuff is because you're outside of city limits now, your water bill is going to be higher. Once you are within the city, that the bill rate should be reduced by half. And so I would assume you'd want to be, you'd want to have some awareness of when the formal annexation will occur because people like smaller bills.
Yes, but there is no sewer bill. And two-thirds of your bill, your water bill is sewer. You don't have to pay it, so you double the water, but you pay for no sewer.
That'll help.
Thank you, I appreciate your explanation.
All right.
How long? Can you give me a ballpark of from this moment till when it's all done?
Yeah, the council hearing is March seventeenth. And then there's a second reading. So the meeting following that would be in April, April seventh. And then there's some administrative things that have to happen. So you're probably looking at May being city limit water bill, I hope.
May, June.
May, June.
Thank you for coming, Catherine, appreciate you being here. The, the next item on the agenda is the St. Helens Industrial Business Park Master Plan. What's that about?
Yeah, so that's me as well. It's my last one, I promise.
Okay, it's all right, doing great.
Green here. Awesome, great. So at the last meeting, I had promised I would come back to you all with the St. Helens Industrial Business Park Master Plan that was adopted at council's January twentieth meeting by resolution. So this is an FYI item. It's not, we're not asking for any action tonight. It's more just, hey, this is going on. And if you see future land divisions or development proposals in the future come before you, you will have this primer on the St. Helens Industrial Business Park. So what is the business park? Well, let's look at a wider scale map here. So as you know, or I hope you know, the city has a number of waterfront redevelopment efforts going on. And so this map is a good summary to talk about the three distinct areas that the city is working on redeveloping. So starting at the north end, well, even further north, the, the blue area is kind of our existing historic downtown. And just to the south, in 2015, we purchased twenty-two acres. It's a former veneer mill. And this area is slated for mixed-use redevelopment. So that property was rezoned from heavy industrial to a more mixed-use zone. And we are actively working on getting that property ready for redevelopment. We are in process of, of designing the street extensions, the public improvements along the water, the whole shebang. So that's the veneer property in green. Going further south, we've got the wastewater lagoon, which we know is massively oversized. City council's been pursuing some redevelopment efforts there. And then even further south is the Boise, former Boise White Paper Mill site. So this yellow two hundred and twenty-five acre-ish parcel has been coined the St. Helens Industrial Business Park. And that's mostly because it, you know, was formerly owned by Boise White Paper. But now we know it's underutilized and oversized, so it can support other industrial users. So last year, we wrote a grant for fifty grand to the Department of Land and Conservation. And they gave us fifty thousand dollars to do a planning effort on the site. And so that wrapped up this past January, twenty twenty-one. So I just want to touch on what the framework has in it. If you're curious and want more information, the full plan is linked in this presentation. And you can also find it on the St. Helens Industrial Business Park planning page. So if this interests you and you want to read more, this is more for the public, but also all of you as well. So I'm going to run through this. The, you know, the goal of this personalization plan is that it's flexible and it helps guide city council, but also Jacob and I through the land divisions and also the infrastructure development of this site. So I'm going to kind of run through some of the existing uses on the site. And then I'll kind of, maybe at the five minutes, you could just give me like five minutes and we can open it up for questions. So first off, we started with an updated market analysis. And Eco Northwest said that the appropriate parcel size for future industries in this area was between two and five acres. And so we focused on that size net acreage, taking out all environmental constraints because we know there's a number of them on the site. And that's kind of the main goal of this, was to get as many parcels of two to five acres as we could. They also said in their market analysis that light manufacturing is, is the likely user in this area and that we're most suited to capture spillover light manufacturing from Portland and other region, regional, county-wide industrial development. So I know it's, it's difficult to read in this and I apologize, but the acreage listed for each parcel is the net acreage. And I've said that multiple times because that's, that's helpful for, for Jacob and I. So there are a number of uses existing on the site. The, the first one and the largest one is Cascade Tissue. So they are currently operating on parcel twenty-three. It's kind of the central parcel. And this area's got the most Boise White Paper former buildings on that site. On parcel twenty-one, so that's here, we recently sold this parcel to A C S P. And they've got some existing operations in some of the buildings on this site. This is also the location of a former landfill that Boise White Paper used for paper waste. There's a P G E substation. So interestingly, this parcel, P G E is the electric provider. They have exclusive use agreements in place that are historic and we are, we are stuck and live with on this site. And so P G E has talked about wanting to expand their substation. And so we incorporated that on parcel twenty-four. We accommodated their larger footprint. We know that there's talk of a potential police station on parcel one up here. And we know that there's an existing recreation center on parcel- And we know that there's an existing recreation center on parcel 28. And the city has done some conceptual designs for an RV park on the larger parcel 28. So that's why it is a larger parcel than than the two to five that we talked about. There's also two non-city-owned parcels in this whole scope. The first is the former Polkland Papers Workers Union building, and that's right here. It's it's not currently within the scope because we don't own it. And then parcel 9A up here. So this is kind of along the the edge of the Treatment Lagoon. And it's currently under Columbia River Fire and Rescue ownership. A while back, there was a trade done and they were supposed to build, or it was supposed to be the location of a training facility. But there was a reversionary clause that it would go back to Boise if, or the current owner, if they never built the training facility. They never built it. And so we're in the process of kind of acquiring that from them. So it's included in our study area. Couple other things to point out on here. There's some undeveloped rights of way that are indicated with the dashed lines. And so these were part of the original plats underlying this area. Some of them could be vacated. They're good candidates for vacation. Some of them, like this one in particular, we may want to keep because it provides access off of Castor, which is a higher classified street. So we want to limit approaches off of Castor. I also want to point out, so this is the rail spur here. And the parcels along the water, it was decided to serve those with an access and utility easement. So the public, public right of way would end right about where I have my cursor. And then it would turn to a private access utility easement to serve those parcels. And that's just because there's so many unknowns about these parcels. Maybe they get served by the river. Maybe that's their main form of transportation and then they just have smaller vehicular traffic. And then there's also the question of rail crossing here. If it's an active rail, what type of crossing? And so we just decided to just serve those with a private access easement. And then the last major thing I want to point out is there's a proposed access easement along the length of Milton Creek. And this is not the proposed alignment of a trail. But by including it in this parcelization plan, any future land divisions would have to accomplish the goal of providing pedestrian access along the creek. So we wanted to make sure that was included. This is because in our Parks and Trails Master Plan, this route is identified as a trail. So it got incorporated into this. And then the last point here is that when I presented this to council, they really wanted to reiterate that future plans for development of any one of these parcels would go through additional rounds of review. This is very preliminary. It's our first stab at planning for utilities and redevelopment of the site. And so there's particular sensitivity from them around the use of the existing softball fields and also of some of the natural areas along the creek. So council did note those two sensitive areas. So I'll open it up for questions. There is one more slide I wanted to talk about, just about utilities for phase one, just to give you a sense of cost and what our future plans are for phase one. But while I have this up, are there questions?
I have a comment. One of the things that prompted us to really want a framework plan to guide the council and staff was the creation of this parcel here. It originally wasn't intended to be a parcel.
Jacob, you're not share screening. Is it, or did you pull up the partition? Or are you just pointing to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just pointing to parcel 21.
Yes, okay.
So it was originally supposed to be just a lease area. And because of the way state law is, you cannot grow marijuana on publicly owned land. And, you know, as a lease area, it was fine, but parceling it off was and will continue to be a nightmare because this, because that parcel does not have direct access to sewer, water, or public streets. And so we had to create all these agreements that are complex. And we, going forward, want to make sure that this property is developed in an organized fashion. Because really, we have a responsibility to do that as something that can create a lot of capital and jobs for the city.
That's a good point. And one thing I wanted to note too, is that this alignment along Castor, if you go out there today, that's not the main road. The main road is this kind of spur route. And so this parcelization plan would, you know, reuse Castor again and get rid of that additional road. I mean, it really just takes up a lot of street right of way on very usable land. So just something to point out.
Yeah, that spur was the result of a union issue in the 1980s, I believe. And was to go around the blockade or whatever they had going on. If you recall where Jenny noted where that union property was. And the spur went around it. You can see it's not in a public right of way. It's just a street that was developed.
Jacob or Jenny, you talk about this parcel 21. That sounds really similar to we did at Monuma Industrial Park. We sold a chunk there. Didn't we sell it or just, or just parceled it out, broke it out into a chunk?
Oh, that port, that port of Columbia County, awful application.
They did not pursue it. I don't think they realized, the ports used to dealing with leases and not property lines. And so, and, and the port, because I talked to the state person that the port claimed insisted they had to do a lot line adjustment. And this person, I think with Business Oregon, it's, you know, that it's been a little while now. You know, when I talked to him, he said he had a little bit of planning experience and remembered something about moving property lines around and suggested that to them. But ultimately, the port did not pursue that. We went through the effort to process it. And they ended up putting that collateral on some different property.
It just sounds similar to.
But it is similar. And the reason why, you know, I was a little extra concerned about it is because of our experience with this property here.
Can I just make a comment about the first water redevelopment introduction page?
Sure.
Take it for what it's worth. I was in a meeting today with the Historic Society and they found it very interesting that you're referring to this as the former vanilla, veneer mill plant, mill site, I mean. Because they said that's the shortest history on that property so that all the long-term residents don't, don't think of that as a veneer site.
I mean, that's who we bought it from.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. Maybe Audrey has a comment on that.
Oh, she's muted. She's shaking her head.
No, I have no comment on it.
I'll just briefly touch on the phasing and our approach here and then we can move on. So phase one is everything in the red. And if you are keen, you might say, well, why is there a non-contiguous portion in phase one? So parcel nine and 9A, remember, this is the CRFR owned property and then this one city. It's actually because they can, they currently have access to city sewer. The sewer line runs along here. And also access can come off of South Ninth or Tenth to those parcels. And so they are not, they're kind of low hanging fruit. If we get the right user, those parcels can be developed with, with little to no public improvements, aside from, you know, some small access improvements. You know, compared to parcel 32 and phase three, which you need to build all this road, all this sewer infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why phase one includes some parcels up here. See. Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to know, it's 911. It's connected to the fire, isn't it? Where the fire property is, the fire department? Is, where's 911?
Oh, C 911? They're off of McDulte.
McDulte Industrial Park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, totally different.
I was, I was thinking because, anyway, go ahead.
Although you get to explaining it, but it sounds like phase two also has same connection.
It's a little more difficult. Yeah, we checked Ninth Street and Tenth Street for suitability. You know, potentially, there may be some wetlands, more wetlands to conquer and some topography issues. But we didn't actually site visit that area. You are, you are noticing a street stub though. So, you know, eventually that could be a good connection. Yeah, so phase one includes bringing Castor Road up to a collector's street standard. Right now, there's no sidewalks. There's no, you know, landscape strips. And it also includes upsizing the water, the sewer, extending water and sewer. At a certain point, you know, Sue is the expert, our engineer, but it's right around here. The parcels can no longer be gravity served by sewer. And so a sewer pump is needed in phase one in order to serve about half of these parcels that are served off Castor. So that's included in costs for phase one. There's also an allowance for wetland mitigation. We just threw a number there because we knew that there might be small amounts of wetlands that need to be mitigated. And so that's how we chose to address that. And then also in phase one, we have this new local street that tees off of Castor. So eventually, you know, as phase three and two develop, there may be a need for a signalization signal here. But in phase one, you know, stop sign is sufficient. So that's infrastructure needs in phase one. In future phases, you'll note there are some regional facilities that might share costs among all of their beneficiaries. For example, there's a regional stormwater facility. You know, there's some efficiencies in developing one larger stormwater collection facility and having all parcels utilize that and then sharing the costs among all the users rather than each facility developing their stormwater retention plan. And so the plan tried to kind of capture that and also recommended different revenue strategies to do that. So local improvement districts, for example, or advanced finance districts. So the plan got pretty detailed in some financials. It's not really the planning commission's purview to look into that, but if you are curious, the full finance plans online, I'd recommend that you look at it. And since this presentation was for council, there's some slides in here that are, I'm just really not going to go over tonight. But this is the phase one cost summary. So you can see that the breakdown, you know, most of the cost in phase one is in streets. So the orange and the dark blue are all just street improvements. And then the other half is utilities, kind of as suspected. Also, the plan talks about our existing revenue sources. So again, more of a council-driven policy decisions, but they're, they're in the plan if you're curious. And yeah, here's the link for anyone at home who's watching this recording, if you want to look at the full planning document. Are there any questions?
So Jenny, on these plans, which shows the wetlands or all the wetlands shown that were delineated and concurred with?
So this southern wetland here hasn't been fully delineated, this really big one on. Yeah, it was, we did some site, I get Jacob can describe, but we decided for cost purposes to just stop delineating that.
Chairman Kerry? Can you hear, is my microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, Chairman Kerry. So I actually, I was, I was there two days ago, walking through there. And I want to say, I think Jenny represented very well some of the concerns that were brought up by me and by new council member Chilton regarding some of the development. It was Councilor Chilton who was especially interested in the fate of the softball fields and making sure that we address that. And my particular concern for that, those parcels in the 30s, in addition to those wetlands, it's, it's an enchanted place with some very unique geographical features that I find interesting. So anyway, so I think when we talk about the council's direction, it is a, I fully support all the work and acknowledge all the work that Jenny and all the planners and city staff have done on doing this, but also remembering that that I voted in favor of the framework, this framework, because it's just that it is a framework. And as Jenny said, we've got many, many steps ahead and many years ahead in putting this, putting all of this through. So I really do hope that members of the commission will take a look at the, the documents that are on the website because it does give a lot of good information about each individual parcel. It's the attributes of each parcel, its size and, and those types of things. And just, I think represents some very, very good work by the staff. So I, I hope that the commission will, you know, continue to be strong partners as, as the council continues to move forward with this.
But to answer your question, Chair Kerry, the, the southern wetland hasn't been formally delineated and concurred with DSL. But all the others on this map, I believe, have potentially, maybe not this one. We'd have to look again. Jacob was more very in tuned with the well and delineation process.
So I, so I'm taking that you have buffers on wetlands that are going to be preserved and the other wetlands are sacrificial?
Yes. I mean, that's, that's kind of the idea. The buffers for the locally significant ones are shown on here. And then the ones that are DSL significant don't have buffers, but they, they're not necessarily sacrificial. I mean, it depends on the parcel and the location of the wetland.
I saw, that was part of the master plan. It's like, we go through here, so this is going to go.
And Jenny, thank you for bringing on track. I got off on a tangent there and I, no, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate that you the focus and brought it back to where it, to where it, to where it belongs. So good work.
Our chairman, you know, works for the state. So I figured his question was about concurrence.
Yeah.
Well, I was just interested to see, because I haven't actually seen the map, you know.
Oh, okay.
All the boundaries. I just wanted to know if that's, this is all the wetlands that were found out there? And how, how they're going to be treated in the master plan?
Yeah, Dan, Dan and Jenny, I got a question like, okay, parcel seven up there on top.
Yep.
Okay, I want to build on the site. Am I going to have to build around all those wetlands?
Well, I think, yeah, it would be in coordination with the city. If, if they wanted to mitigate them on their own dime, the city would happily let them do that. But if they were asking us to mitigate them for them, I think it would be a negotiation. That's how I would imagine the council would treat.
Do we have any mitigation on the site down, down to what you've got? Anywhere else on the site? Or I've got to go somewhere to mitigate them as far as?
Oh, like a mitigation bank?
Yeah.
There are no mitigation banks in Columbia County. But I think what he's asking is, is there, has the master plan thought about? Or talked to your consultant about appropriate places where mitigation could be potentially created or enhanced or restored onsite?
Right. And I think that was sort of the intent of parcel 35, but maybe more nuanced. The idea is that this becomes a regional stormwater facility, which may involve enhancing wetlands. But as far as wetland creation, we didn't.
Stormwater treatment is, can't be remediation, so.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to see, you're going to try and sell these sites, correct? Or lease them?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, you know, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the port to market this property. And so this document may be used as a tool to market future users. But the city is not just going to turn around and sell a property, you know, I think there would be a negotiation.
Just, just so you know, I have a little experience with these permitting things that. That for a big industrial subdivision like this, you could have to have a plan for developing like Parcel 7 before you can just fill that well and... So there's no, there's no, there's no filling for, for the future. So basically, in other ports like this I've worked with, they either say, "We're going to take care of your wetland mitigation for you and sell it as if there's no wetlands there." Or say, "Here's the wetlands and it's up to you to get your permits and do your mitigation."
That's something that needs to be talked about in the offering to lease these or sell these. But one thing, Dan, can you, can you take a wetland delineation, right? At one size and can you change that shape but still have the same square footage?
You're still impacting that particular spot in the world.
Okay.
And you're changing, you're not just changing it, you're creating well and somewhere else. So you could, you could create well and adjacent to your existing well and, and cut off a chunk, so forth.
So you could, you could change the shape of what you need to do to put a building in or something like that?
Yeah, that's what everybody does, but you're still mitigating for your impacting.
Okay.
It might not be appropriate to mitigate on the same parcel. Maybe the soils aren't right, or not enough water there, or whatever, or it won't hold water.
Well, I just think that, you know, if there's a bunch of roadblocks for, you know, industries coming out to look at, build out here in this parcel, if there's a bunch of roadblocks, you know, they're going to turn away. And so they would have to be marketed, so they'd be, yeah, you got mitigation, but what are you going to do with it?
Yeah. I think, Russ, it's like you're two steps down the way. I mean, the biggest roadblock right now is there's no roads and utilities. So I think the first step is getting that finance plan in order so that you can at least do that basic build out and then you can get into the nitty gritty of mitigating. I mean, Parcel 7 is a particularly encumbered property. But some of these other ones may be much easier to develop.
A good example is McDulty Industrial Park, the Port's industrial park. They went through a whole process of, of basically fake sighting buildings, the kinds of industry they expect to come under the property and what well as we get impacted, and design a mitigation for all of the impacts in the entire industrial park. So they got a, they have a permit for, or they have a plan, a master plan for, for just that.
Okay.
That's one way to do it.
An overall plan could be made to leave that, pretty much, okay?
Yeah.
I think we went through the shovel readiness program through the state, too.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So speaking of Parcel 7, the wetland with the buffer around it, city law says that impacts to that are supposed to be minimized. So you really have to prove your impact. So mitigating those is going to be challenging because the city has determined that it's significant. The other ones, you know, we worked with both DSL and the Army Corps of Engineers. And so some of those wetlands are federally significant and we'd have to deal with the Army Corps. And some of them, we just deal with DSL. And I can't remember which or which, I'd have to look at my documentation.
So Jacob, so the ones with the buffers around them, they were identified in the local well and inventory back in '95?
Yeah, and determined to be significant to the city's Goal 5 periodic review process.
Yeah, one of the first times I ever came in front of the council was to talk about this one that they wanted to have non-significant along the waterfront. Remember that, the Boise?
Oh, back in 2004?
It might have been before you came on, actually.
It was before I came on and coincidentally, it's, I think that's wetland F4, which Boise did successfully remove, but it's still in our code. And one of our code amendments is striking that from the list.
Yeah.
Based on the work that was done back then. But yeah, that would be the wetland on the, in the upper right corner between, yeah, that one right there.
So what Jacob's saying is when a local well inventory is done and each particular wetland that was mapped comes up functionally, high functioning in some way, it was then considered to be locally significant, then it means that the local ordinance is applied to that well. And the other wetlands are still jurisdictional, Department of State lands, or maybe the Corps of Engineers. But they just don't have the additional bureaucracy around buffers and so forth. Doesn't have city, doesn't have a city ordinance related to them.
All right.
I know the mayor would like us to relook at our wetland buffers and what wetlands are significant. And that would be a pretty tall order. We definitely need some help. That could be in the midterm future.
Cool. Well, I hope this was helpful.
Yes.
I think we're ready to move on.
All right. 2021 Development Code Amendments Review.
Okay, so we've been talking about this for several meetings. But some of you weren't able to attend those meetings and some of you are brand new. So next month, we're going to have our public hearing on the matter. So I want to at least give you all a primer on where we're at, talk about some of the latest on that. And just to help make sure that you're prepared, we did send notice out to about 4,000 property owners. I've gotten a few phone calls on that. So some of you who own property within city limits, including our city councillor there, that have received four pages of interesting text that unless you're in the business, probably sounds all weird. So I guess I'll do a really quick review of what we're going to be talking about next month. And then I also provided you a copy of the actual text amendments just to see if anybody had any questions in the meantime. But let me just, and I'm not going to do a full presentation, but I'm going to pull up these slides just to give an overview for some of the people who haven't heard it. And this presentation will be updated again, so this is kind of the old one. But some of the slides are going to be new to you, to some of you, and new to all of you. Okay, so this is all about House Bill 2001, that's the reason, that's the main primer behind it. This is a map showing the cities affected. 10,000 and up, as far as cities, if you're below 10,000, you're not affected. There's St. Helens there. Where it's all really about duplexes. If we look at our zoning map, everything that is residential and then mixed use is affected. So a lot of these yellow and brown colors, a great deal of the city. This just shows some of the uses by zoning district. And currently duplexes aren't allowed in the R10 zone. They require a special permit, condition use permit in these two zoning districts. And where we have to go is they all need to be permitted across the board. So basically, anywhere we allow detached single-family dwellings, normal houses, we have to allow duplexes. One of the discussions we had was whether or not we go with a traditional duplex, which is tied to the hip or tied from head to foot, like in this case, or two detached units. And we're not mandated to do attached, but the council wanted us to proceed with allowing two detached units. And so that'll be part of the thing. And so we talked about these separation requirements. This was the last, the last planning commission meeting, we talked about creating these separation requirements between buildings, which we don't have, which will very depend on zoning. And all these lots are scaled appropriately. So you can kind of see the different sizes and dimensions. The council did tentatively agree with the building separation. Of course, we're going to have testimony and we'll see what kind of testimony we get. And if you recall, the planning commission went for six feet in some of these higher density zoning districts, R5 and AR, instead of the five feet. And last time, I, what I was told by the building official was, well, it was within the wrong context. Six feet is the magic number as far as once buildings are closer than six feet, that's when firewalls and stuff start to come into play. And so six feet makes sense as a building separation requirement. Another thing that some of you remember, we talked about early on, currently a detached single-family dwelling lot is 3,050 square feet with a minimum width of 30 feet. And our proposal will increase the lot size and dimension to 4,000 square feet and a 40-foot width. But that will also be eligible for duplexes. You need a 5,000-square-foot lot that's 50 feet wide for a duplex. And so you're kind of meeting in the middle there. Parking, it's only two spaces. And everybody agreed about, you know, not requiring less than two for a single dwelling or duplex. The one thing that we didn't get to the planning commission too much, and we actually put this question in the correspondence that we sent to property owners, was how do we calculate that two spaces? In dealing with building permits, and Jenny can attest to this, you know, over the years, a lot of times what we're arm wrestling about are parking standards. And so it seemed appropriate to talk about that as part of these changes. So currently, if this was a dwelling, one dwelling, you would need two spaces. And they need to be independently functional, so two side by side, so that works. This, you know, someone could count this as three or four spaces. But based on the independently functional concept, this would only count as two. And so one of the questions that we're posing, and that we actually posed to the council, was whether or not tandem parking should constitute your two spaces. And so, you know, we don't really need an answer from you tonight. But you will be providing a recommendation to the council at your next meeting. And we'll see what kind of feedback we get on that. And the idea behind this is it's less pavement, less cost. And, you know, your on-street parking may accommodate that. I think if there's any gravity towards allowing tandem parking as meeting your two spaces, it may be situations where on-street parking is available. Because if it's not available, you really probably should have some more room. So that's a new thing that we hadn't discussed with the planning commission. So that's just something to be thinking about. Just another example of independently functional, these two spaces, can I both get out or in with another car, not having to move to get out of the way? We talked about driveways and rights of way, I won't get into that too much today since we talked about that stuff quite a bit. So that's kind of the really quick overview. I don't know if anybody reviewed the code. We can talk about any questions that you have. Let me stop sharing my screen. We can talk about any questions you have in reading the code. I know in years past, we kind of go line by line for errors and discussions. And I wanted to at least give you the opportunity for some of those discussions tonight since we don't have a lot of testimony that's going to take up the time just to help you contemplate what we're going to be talking about next month.
Well, I know, I would like to take time and read this over and over and then be ready for testimony.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of changes that go on.
It is a lot. And I did provide that summary of changes by chapter because not everybody's used to reading code. And some people, it'll just make you go blind, right? So that's why I wanted to create that summary by chapter. So hopefully, people who aren't used to reading code to have a little better understanding of what's going on.
Just flipping through this, the changes are in the red and the green.
That's correct, yeah. A lot of times, you'll just see them struck or underlined. But I like to color them. It's just, it's easier for the eyes to see what's changing and what's new.
I like what you're doing in.
Yes.
Are the ones that struck, do they have a line through them always?
They should. I did notice I missed some in some of my many, 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 many revisions. But they should. Anything that's red should have a line stuck through it. So if you see one that doesn't, let me know.
I will talk to my wife. I'm colorblind.
Okay. So can you see the greens or reds at all then?
No, reds and greens are not, right? When you show me maps for like the, any of your programs that you've got going on and you have all these color shades, I play dumb. So, I mean, if they're dotted or there's another symbol on them or something like that, that I have to have my wife make notes on the colors corresponding to that every time. Because I'm, yeah, I can't see it.
Okay, well, in your case, if it's underlined, it's new text, and if it's struck, it's deleted.
Got it. Thank you for the handicap.
So you can't tell the difference between the colors or you can't see the actual color? You can't tell the difference between the colors, you can't see the color?
I can't see the color. They blend together, the colors. Reds and greens are all the same to me.
If you see it, they just don't know what color it is.
Right.
Okay, all right, good.
So Jacob, I have one question about the difference between, I guess, the change. The way I understood it was the word duplex was going away. And as we're looking through these slides, I'm thinking, are we eliminating any time where two units could be attached? Are we still going to allow duplexes in some form if they're attached, or?
Yeah, I think what I said, when we first started talking about this, we framed it as, you know, what's the definition of duplex? And should a duplex be attached or should they also be two detached units? And in doing that, it was clear that, okay, and this was based on the state stuff. It was like, all right, this, we have to call duplexes duplexes and two detached units, two detached units. And so those are still allowed. And so for example, if you look in the zoning district descriptions, if we go to R10, for example, and you look at the uses permitted outright, you'll see that duplex has been added because they weren't allowed at all. And then after single dwelling unit, comma, detached, so that's our normal, detached single-family dwelling is our normal term for a home. Well, not normal at all, it's the planner's term for a normal home. But you'll see that after that line, it says up to two may be allowed per lot or parcel. And so that's what's accommodating, that you can have a duplex or you can have two detached units. That's how it's manifested in this ordinance.
Okay, that makes sense.
So yeah, duplexes are totally allowed. If we didn't allow duplexes, we'd be in complete violation of the House bill. And that would be kind of fun, but I think we want to try to honor it. Good question, though.
So as you can see, Commissioner Kavanaugh, there's really exciting meetings here. Should we get into these?
It's super entertaining. I'm really enjoying it.
But, I mean, this is, and I told Shannon this, this is huge because this is the end of single-family zoning for the city of St. Helens, probably forever. Definitely in anybody's lifetime. Definitely in anybody's lifetime here. And, and this, and single-family dwell, single-family zoning basically means zoning that is single-family centric. You know, the single-family dwelling is king. And what this bill is saying, no, single-family dwelling can't be king anymore. You have to allow two units on the same footing.
Is this ordered, this ordered by the state of Oregon or is it federal?
State of Oregon House Bill 2001.
Well, it ought to be a lively conversation because there's so much misinformation out there about it that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's understood. Russ, I'm going to put in a fourplex here.
Let's do it. Okay.
Low, low-cost housing.
Yeah, well, we already got you right behind that. So the only thing I like about this is we're getting really rid of the auxiliary dwelling units. You know, that, that part of the code was so confusing and why, you know, why are we doing it? The only other objection I have in this whole thing is, is, is existing residential units, that's why people buy there. And we're just trying to change that. But it, I don't know, it's, it's, I think they ought to let people do what they want to do rather than making everybody, you know, it, it goes under the, under the auspices of being affordable and, and, and it's not the case. It's not going to be affordable. Sorry.
I think the percentage of people that are already in their single-family home that's already built, they're not going to do a lot of it.
No, I think, I think we've got the, you know, the existing single-family lots that are going to stay that way and, and they will. But just, just having the state say, we've got to open everything up to whatever. So if there's a little parcel or something, there'll be a duplex by a developer that comes in and doesn't keep the character of the, of the rest of the street. But anyway, that's, that's life.
So Jennifer, you've heard some interesting things then about what's going on?
Well, I've got a few questions on how it's going to affect property. And it just seems that there's misinformation that they're going to force people to build two units and it's just. Wow.
Yeah, it's, you know, you, when I was writing the, the, you know, how, how do you explain this stuff for someone who's not a developer or a planner? Because it's so abstract. I mean, it's all law. And I fielded four phone calls already and all of them have been people that really don't quite understand it. But basically, they want to make sure that, you know, they're not going to be impacted. And I've been able to, you know, we're not forcing you to do anything.
Well, and I got a question. Oh, does that mean Columbia City has to do it too? It's like, no.
Now Columbia City's small.
Different size, yeah. I'm just glad Jacob's contact was in the notice letter. He's been getting calls all day and I'm just like, sweet.
But we, I, I would say that, you know, we did more than the minimum. You know, thinking about this, it kind of forced us to recalibrate a lot of things. And there was some messy language in the code about other things. And it was like, you know what, it's time to get some of this messy stuff out of there. You know, some of the things that we put in here, our discussions I had with Skip over 10 years ago about, well, this is weird in the code, this is how it works. And, you know, it's, it's time to clean some of that stuff up. In addition to dealing with the state requirements.
Are you signaling, Counselor Burkle there? Were you, were you signaling? Just making sure.
Yeah, no, no, I, no, I'm, I'm just looking at the notice too. And one thing that popped out is that it's coming before the planning commission on March 9th and the city council on April 7th. Is that the same night where they were supposed to be voting on the public safety building? Is that when we're getting the recommendation after all the input? Anyway, exciting times ahead. Okay. So no, that was not a signal chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't remember, but the, the dates, because we're supposed to have this adopted by the end of June. And so the public hearing dates were, you know, these were planned some time ago to make sure we stayed on schedule. And that's why at the, the very long council meeting we had where, you know, it was what, 3:30, 4 o'clock and well, time to Jacob to talk forever about these code amendments. It, you know, we knew it was a long meeting, but because of the timeline, it had to happen then. So we're trying to stay on that timeline.
I just had one other question. I was looking on the city's website today. And how often are, is that updated? Or is everything current on there? If you're looking at the redevelopment project and different things on the site, is that continually updated?
It depends what page you're talking about. You know, the city is, the city operation is synonymous with chaos. There's so much going on and it's like everybody's that's the city. That's how the city operates. Do you want me to repeat that? So some stuff gets updated, some stuff doesn't. I know I had some signed stuff on there that had been forever. It's like, man, let's get rid of that. But I can't tell you that the page for the code amendments is very up to date.
Okay.
That, I, I, I think that it is being worked on. We, the, the city hired a new part-time person to help with some of the communications and to help Crystal. And I know that Rachel Berry. So I, I think there's a strong effort being made on the, the website as well as, as other, as other communications. And so that was recognized. So we have Crystal, Rachel Berry, and then Cameron, who's one of our library assistants, has also taken, been hired part-time with, with the communication. So I, I think you, that's a good question, Jennifer, but I, I, I do think we've, some steps are taken to try to bring everything up to date.
Good.
One other thing I want to talk about as far as the, the parking space question. Another thing we can potentially do is instead of calculating two side-by-side spaces as an 18 by 18 pad, is allow a reduced width potentially. The typical double-car garage door is 16 feet in width. And so, you know, part of the discussion may be, well, for single-family dwellings and duplexes, do we have a smaller parking space dimension, 16 feet instead of 18 feet? So we'll kind of see where that discussion goes. But it's, that's something to think about.
So, so Jacob, what are you expecting us to prepare for, for next month? What are we expecting? Are we going to read this, read this thing line by line next month?
Not necessarily. I know we've done that in the past. If you read it and you see anything that's like, hmm, I don't know, maybe there's a screw up here, by all means, bring it up.
Or reach out before the hearing. Like, we're available to answer questions. So in case there are a lot of people wanting to testify, we don't take up time with that. I don't.
If, you know, if we did, if we weren't with our backs against the wall as far as time, you know, I, I, it's very possible we would have had the meeting where we kind of, well, go through each page and make sure everybody's on the same page, no pun intended, with the content on that page. And I want to at least give the option for you to do that tonight, but I'm not going to force it. But I wanted you to, I wanted you to have this stuff in advance to be able to digest it. Because this will be the same version that goes to the, the public hearing. So I'm not going to force it, but certainly if there's any questions, let us know. Because you'll be ranking your recommendation to the council who will see it a month after you. Or you can just rely on the summary by chapter instead of diving into the micro details of the specific text itself.
Are there any questions about this for Jacob? Next, our agenda is planning director decisions, like a lot of signs. We have issues with those. What the planning department activity report?
Yeah, let's just see. So before I try to remember what I wrote, now I'm actually going to read it here. Let's see, grocery outlet is progressing along well. Although they were freaked out about their system development charges, which is, that's a repeating story. The high school is kind of preparing behind the scenes for a bunch of renovations related to that bond they passed. So that's something that'll probably see this year. And if you recall, the middle school addition or the new middle school and the Plymouth High School, we gave that to the planning commission and we'll probably do the same for the middle school. Or, I'm sorry, for the high school. So that'll probably be, it would normally be administrative, but a big public project like that's appropriate for the planning commission. And I already told them, we would probably refer that to you folks. So that's something you'll get to, be able to see in the future.
I'd just say that we're knowing the sidewalks are looking good. I already walked my dogs on a lot of portions of it already.
That's good. Yeah, that was a, a lot of people clamored over that project. It's nice to finally see that happening. Let's see, our e-permitting system continues to be problematic with the data. It's really exciting. The big Gable Road apartment project, there's still stuff behind the scenes happening there. I think they said they wanted to submit their development permits in April or May, which isn't that far off. Of course, House Bill 2001, we talked about that. And we're starting to solicit interest in the Millard Road property. There's some stuff behind the scenes there. Jenny, do you want to talk about anything on your monthly report?
Yeah, you covered the Millard Road one. So council authorized us to work with Echo Northwest to work on a RFP. So they're going to generate some goals that they have for the property and then try to solicit proposals from potential developers. And then score those in ranks based on their priorities for the site. So things like parks, public access through the site. Those are all considerations that we would have for any future development on the site. I submitted for our certified local grant. So for those that may remember, you are also the Historic Landmarks Commission. Shauna, you may see some historic preservation projects. This body acts as both. And so we will have $10,000 to award for eligible properties. And just in the interest of I have it open, this is our district, our historic district, eligible properties include all those in yellow and red. For Russ, I'm sorry. I don't know how else to demonstrate that. But it's, it's about 75% of the properties eligible. So we'll send notice to them that we have $10,000 for exterior renovations. They have to match the grant with another $10,000. So the minimum project is 20,000. They have two years to complete the project. And this body will prioritize and rank those applications at their September meeting. And there's a score sheet. So we'll all guide you through the whole process about how you rank and score the applicants. This is just a heads up that we're going to be doing this again this year.
I'm not eliminated from that, am I, since I'm on the cushion?
You'd probably have to sit out on scoring.
Yeah, I was going to say, I live down here too. I don't own, but, you know, I would like a renovation to my house also.
Yeah, are you an eligible property owner?
No, 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 I don't own this. I rent.
Oh, got it.
I'm, I'm right down here on First. I'm a historic house.
Tell the property owner, yeah. Or if you know of anybody, we like the process to be competitive. Last year, we awarded, or two years ago, we awarded it to the theater to help with their marquee replacement. So it was a huge project. But there's a website that is fairly updated on our, on our city's page that says all the past projects. And there have been really some great projects funded with this money. So.
I have a really ugly wall.
Yeah, that'd be a great project. And I think that's all I had. Yeah, that's all I have for now.
So we're down to your four information items. Do you have any four information items, Beth?
Two, two things. So next month, we have the code amendments and that'll be exciting. And that public hearing is scheduled for 8 o'clock. And the reason we scheduled it for 8 o'clock is because our Belton Road land partition is reignited and we'll be seeing that at 7 o'clock. That was the one that the Schumpers had, if you recall.
Oh, yeah.
That was quite eventful. So what happened is the, the, the easement, the famous easement that was the basis for denial is no more. And they dropped the case with the Land Use Board of Appeals and re-deplied for the partition. So part two is coming to a planning commission near you. And so that'll be at 7 o'clock. And we'll see how fun that is. And the council has been talking about meeting in person again with separation requirements. I know that some of you have expressed a desire to be able to meet in person again. And I think we'll probably kind of follow the council's lead. They're going to discuss it in March and you know, I, I, I'm not going to make any promises that that's going to happen overnight. But at least there's a discussion going and maybe sometime this calendar year, we'll be back to meeting in person, at least in a modified sense. So just stay tuned on that.
Okay. For the last couple of minutes here, I wonder if Commissioner Kavanaugh, if you just introduce yourself, why, why you wanted to, why did you want to join this commission? Someone was worried on the interview committee. You don't, if you don't mind, if you're not.
No, yeah, no, that's totally fine. Yeah, I, I haven't met quite a few of you. I believe I met Commissioner Semling and Jacob during that process. But yeah, no, I just, I was born and raised here and I moved away when I was shortly out of high school and I, you know, I lived in Portland and I lived in Eugene. And I just came back to Columbia County about five or six years ago now. And I have kids now. So, you know, my kids are in school and I'm invested in the community. So I just thought this was a really good opportunity. Jenny Carlson actually is the one that pointed out this opportunity. Also, side note, that's a bird in the background, so I apologize for the distraction. But yeah, so Jenny pointed out that there was going to be, you know, an opening or two on the planning commission. And I had talked with her a few times before about, you know, ways to get involved. And she said that, you know, that that would be a great way. And so, yeah, here I am. I haven't really ever done anything like this specifically before, but I'm really interested in everything that you guys do. And I'm really looking forward to it. I'm kind of a nerd and I like a lot of detailed things. So it seems like this is kind of right up my alley.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You'll learn more about us. It won't take time to introduce all the rest of us in future months.
I would just say too, as a new commissioner, there's no dumb questions. Like if we breeze over something, like always feel free to ask clarification. Like it helps me remember, oh yeah, not everyone thinks of R7 zoning every day. Like just don't feel ashamed to ask any questions.
Yeah, for sure. I know you guys have seemed really awesome tonight. I was a little nervous about it, but you guys are great. So I'm pretty comfortable about it now.
Well, I just wanted, I just want to tell you, we have a very varied group of the planning commission. And I have to say, you know, no matter how varied we are, we work really well together. And we don't have a dysfunctional kind of group like some other groups, maybe even in the city. And I, that's why I stayed with it. So I appreciate the planning commission working well. It wouldn't always agree, but we work well together.
The notebook you give, they give you, you've got two weeks and there's a test on it.
Oh, God. Don't scare me. Don't scare me like that.
You have to bring baked goods to the first inversion.
There's a dungeon underneath City Hall for those who failed the test.
The test has got to be pretty easy because we're all here.
All right. I guess we're done. And thank you for all coming.
I move we.
We'll be adjourned.
Adjourned.
See you March 9th.
All right.